Good evening, everyone. Apologize for being late. We had a meeting prior to this and called this meeting to order. We are at our regular meeting for the City of Daly City Monday, February 12, 2018. For those wishing to address the City Council of any item on the agenda or under public appearances or oral communications, please complete a speaker card located at the entrance and submit to a staff member as early as possible. Let's all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. May we have roll call, please?
Ms. Christensen?
Here.
Mr. Gingona?
I'm here.
Mr. Buena Ventura?
Present.
Mr. Sylvester?
Present.
Ms. Manalo?
Present. Okay, we have the approval of minutes for the regular meeting of January 22, 2018.
Move to approve the minutes.
Do I have a second? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, I have approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion?
So moved?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, moving on to the consent agenda. All items listed on the consent agenda are considered to be routine and may be approved by roll call. Do we have any items that any of our council members would like to pull?
Move to approve for the consent agenda.
Oh, one, okay, we have a council member, Sylvester, please.
Madam Mayor, if we can pull item number one for further discussion.
Yeah.
With the exception of that, may I move for the passage of the consent agenda?
Sure.
Second.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
And I'd like to extend from that vote.
And with one extension. So can we have the staff member for the reso-
Chief Hensley?
Hello, Chief Hensley, good evening.
Good evening, Council.
Hello, Chief, thank you so much for coming in and being available to explain, provide further information on this item. It's my understanding that we are to release the amount of approximately, I think it's eighty-one thousand back to the asset forfeiture fund, and I guess this is as a result of going through all the cases and to which to comply with the statute of eleven-four-seventy-one point two, that eighty-one thousand dollars is the amount we came up with.
That is correct.
Thank you, sir. I'm looking at section B of that same statute, and I just wanted to ask, and I'll quote it, "In any case in which the forfeited property is cash or negotiable instruments of a value not less than forty thousand dollars, there shall be no requirement of a criminal conviction as a prerequisite by the state or local law enforcement agencies." I guess what I'm asking here is, it looks like that forty thousand dollars might be a threshold to which it doesn't require a criminal conviction. I'm just wondering if that was taken into account as well.
Yes, we actually went through and used a consultant to go through and look at all of the cases that we had pending. From the time we started consulting and up till the point we put the staff report together, we were still receiving more money coming in. So we had already stopped and weren't getting any seizures under forty thousand before then, but some still trickled in while we were going through the process, and those are the funds that we are now returning.
That's outstanding, Chief. It was my concern that, I was wondering, first of all, if we've met that threshold, and it looks like we have, and I know we have no control over the arrest or the conviction rates, because that goes to the district attorney, and what happens, it happens. So my last comment is, thank you so much. I appreciate the staff that you've assigned to the task force to work on narcotics and the arrest of various criminals within that particular element, and I want to say a job well done, and thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
That's all I have, Madam Mayor.
Okay, so with that, do I have a motion to approve that?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, actually, roll call, please.
Ms. Christensen?
Yes.
Mr. Gingona?
Aye.
Mr. Buena Ventura?
Aye.
Mr. Sylvester?
Aye.
Ms. Manalo?
Aye. Resolution passes, and now we're moving on to public appearances and oral communications. May we have Ms. Marguerite Machen? Machen? And also Manufu Viaga Anai. You have two minutes, and the organization you're representing is the Commission of Status of Women. Welcome.
Hi. Good evening, everybody. My name is Marguerite Machen, and I live here in Daly City, and I also am on the, a commissioner on the commission on the status of women, woman, women, with my polyphobe here. And we would like the support of you all in helping us to, excuse me, recruit and get attendees for our first Women's Leadership Conference. We're launching our first Women's Leadership Conference, and we have some flyers here today, and I'm gonna have Beau give you more information about that.
First of all, good evening, honorable City Council members. It's always wonderful to come before you. First of all, thank you for all the work that you do for our city. I did want to push a mention, as you've seen today, we both had reposted that Jefferson Elementary School District is number three on the list of being the safest school district in the Bay Area. And I had to put that in there because that is also a collaboration of the work and the spirit of the work that we do at the Commission on Status of Women. We're both Daly City women, coming here to ask for support from our city council. Marguerite was also honored at our Women of Excellence here in Daly City in City Hall, and I believe that council member Buena Ventura was on the council at that time when she was honored. So we're here to also mention that Kalima Saludin, who is on the Jefferson Unified High School District, is one of our honorees this year. So I will be quite frank and say that we don't see a lot of North County participation. We are both on the commission, always promoting North County, and I would love, we would love, to ensure that we can count on your support, not just at the leadership conference, but even at our meetings. We have meetings on the fourth Tuesday of every month in Redwood City, and that's at six-thirty. So if you're ever in the neighborhood, if you're defending those in law enforcement, join us, join us, please. So thank you for your time, we have flyers for you, and we hope that you will be able to help us spread the word.
Thank you very much.
Do you have any questions for us?
Yeah, do you, Madam Mayor? Is it open to anyone to come to?
It is open to everyone. There is a ticket fee of a hundred dollars, but there are scholarships available. Many students from all of our colleges have already purchased tickets, their learning communities actually have purchased their tickets, because Dr. Stroud, who is the president of Skyline, is our keynote speaker.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you both for your leadership and really representing North County and Daly City in your roles, and it's really very inspiring to see this, because this is great for also the young women out there, so thank you for your leadership.
Thank you, and you're a testament of the spirit of the work. I also would be remiss if I didn't mention Ms. Leila Pereira, who is also assisting us in our efforts.
Oh, nice.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you for-
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next we have Ms. Carolyn Harameo from Faith in Action.
Two minutes. Good evening, Council. My name is Carolyn Harameo, I live in Pacifica. At one time, I did live here in Daly City, and it was my honor and privilege to have taught here in Daly City for twenty-five years. And so Daly City is very dear and dear to my heart, and I recently been aware of the terrible suffering that's going on with the tenants here in the city, and how many of them are being displaced because of the high rents and unjust cause evictions. And I just want to come and say that the whole time that I was teaching, I learned a great deal from the children and their families here. They were very resilient, resourceful, and it was very inspiring to see this community of such ethnic and economic diversity. And I think, you know, this is a matter of conscience, what's happening here and how people are being displaced because of greed. And not only is it a matter of conscience, but I hope City Council realizes it's a matter of good business practice to stop this displacement, to do what you can do to meet with the tenants, to study the issue, to see what solutions can be brought to bear on this problem, because you will be losing a tremendous treasure in this city if this displacement continues. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Harameo. We have Gloria Stofan from Faith in Action.
My name's Gloria Stofan, I'm with Faith in Action. I live in Pacifica, however, Daly City is, of course, a neighboring city, and we all are in the same county. I'm here also to support the Daly City tenants who are being evicted from their homes. They're good, hardworking families who have contributed so much to their community and are really just trying to be very much a part of what we all consider the American dream of being able to live freely with dignity and with justice. It's important, and I'm hoping, I'm gonna be very short, that maybe there's some way that the council, the city can maybe negotiate with the landlord. Too many displacements, too many families moving out of the county, and just really, it's a sad situation to see. We're having the same difficulty in Pacifica, and we just, we're tired of it, we're just really tired of it. Thank you for giving me this time, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Ms. Stofan. Next we have Ellen Haig with Faith in Action.
I'm Ellen Haig from Pacifica, a member of Faith in Action, Bay Area, and I'm calling here also this evening, coming here this evening to support the tenants whose rents are going through the roof and they're being evicted. It's unjust that families are being displaced, having to pull their children out of schools, commuting from far away if they have a job here. My husband grew up in Westlake, and so I'm very familiar with this city, and it used to be a place for, that was affordable for families, and that's no longer the case. But you could, there's something that you could do, you could support the tenants and find out what you could do to protect them. I just brought this one statistic with me from the San Mateo County eviction report 2016. Seventy-five percent of evictions in 2014 and 2015 were based on no cause or rent was too high. That's pretty shocking to me. I think it's a moral issue, and I urge you to look into it and do what you can. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Haig. We have Mr. Eduardo Gonzalez.
Hi, good evening, Council. My name is Eduardo Gonzalez, and I'm a Daly City resident. I'm also here speaking in solidarity to the families that are being evicted on Teoria Street. The Bay Area is facing a huge housing crisis due to the lack of protection families have to landlords increasing rent by hundreds from one month to another. This causes families to uproot themselves from the community they have called home for years, if not their whole life. It means having to get used to new surroundings, and for young people, adjusting to a new life away from their support groups here in Daly City. I work with the Youth Leadership Institute, which is a youth-serving organization, and I can say in my experience, I've dealt with students and the youth that I partner with that have to leave the communities they are working to improve because their parents cannot make rent. And I can also sadly say that this also is affecting their academic, mental, and physical health, having to commute in the mornings because they want to stay in, with their community, having to deal with the stress of not knowing if their parents are gonna be able to afford, if they do choose to stay, but also the academics of not having a support group if they choose to move to the East Bay, to Hayward, where most of them are ending up. Youth are huge in this community, and we want to make sure that we're protecting their future, so that's why I'm here in support of not only the families, but the youth that are also being affected by this issue. And like that, the stress is not just reserved to the parents, not having security, not feeling sure of what you have to sacrifice next to meet rent is observed and takes a toll on mental and physical health. I hope the council can do something about this issue and protect tenants from these unjust actions. You have been elected to listen and act on the concerns of the community of Daly City. Please hear our concerns, and I hope you get to act for the community you are choosing to represent is no longer here. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gonzalez. May we have Ms. Susan Moore, please?
My name is Suzanne Moore, retired family nurse practitioner from San Mateo County. I worked at the Daly City Crilic across the street for over fifteen years. In the last years of my practice, I had clients struggling with sudden high rent increases and evictions through no fault. There was less money for healthcare, some were forced to take meds irregularly to stretch them out, healthy foods were unaffordable. Our chief public health officer confirmed my experience was common, and that the county's housing crisis was causing a public health crisis. We know that families displaced or evicted are more likely to have worsening of chronic health conditions and to experience mental health conditions with our children especially at risk. Indeed, evicted children have a greater lifetime risk for depression. The health impact of the housing crisis is real, and the families from Peoria tonight are not alone. In San Mateo County, evictions without cause increased three-hundred-and-eight percent between 2012 and 2015, with seventy percent of those evicted families with children. Daly City had the dubious honor in 2016 of being the second highest city in San Mateo County for no-fault evictions. Public health isn't the only community impact from the housing crisis, with sixty percent of our workers in San Mateo County commuting from outside our county, and that explains our heavy traffic pattern. Education is impacted by lack of affordable housing for educators. It's certainly important for each community to support economic diversity and affordable housing for all. It's up to this council to consider its stand on this issue. Although additional housing is needed long-term to meet demands of our workforce, tenant protection can slow displacement in the short run and keep residents in their existing homes. Adoption of tenant rights can protect against egregious events such as no-fault evictions that these families are experiencing. I hope this council has the foresight, compassion, and political will to protect the nearly forty-five percent of Daly City residents who are tenants. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Moore. We have Pamela Di Giovanni.
Hi, good evening, Honorable Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council members. I originally got up here to talk about Dave Farrar, our officer, Daly City police officer, who's having his art displayed upstairs, and there'll be a reception at some point to encourage the community to come out and visit our city hall, which is very friendly to residents. And having heard this Faith in Action tonight, I did hear a statistic, I believe it was on the news last night, that there was sixteen thousand people that have left the Bay Area completely because of, even in high-tech jobs or what have you, because they could no longer afford to live here. So that, to me, is a staggering statistic. I don't, I will ask the council to even look into it further and to all the things that were mentioned tonight, and I know that Daly City celebrates its diversity and wants to keep our diversity here, so I'm sure that they'll do the right thing and look into in detail. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Di Giovanni. Can we have Jose Alvarez?
My name is Jose Alvarez, and I live at 381 Peoria in Daly City, and I'm one of three tenants in my building that are being unfairly evicted. My family's been living at this apartment for eleven years. My youngest son is basically, this is the only home he knows. We pay our rent on time, we don't, you know, damage any of the property in the building. In fact, we look after it. Anytime there's a problem in the building, I make sure that I communicate with the landlord to make sure that we find some type of resolution, and I try to help in any way I can with it. Last, on February first was the end of my sixty-day notice to move out for no reason. I was given a notice, it didn't specify anything but that they wanted us out. My rent right now is sixteen hundred, which is five hundred more since when I first moved there. You know, the landlord prior was pretty fair about raising the rent slowly and not in large amounts, but apparently the landlord that we have now, after moving a new person into one of the apartments, saw how much she can gain from it, and decided that the other three tenants have to go so they can get more money. I don't think that it's fair that hard-working families that pay their rent on time and take care of their neighborhood should be forced out simply because someone wants a thousand dollars more for that unit, which is pretty much what's gonna be happening once we move out. And the timing is horrible, it's the middle of the school year, I got one senior in high school and another eighth grader going to high school next year, and I am not gonna be able to stay in the area, so, you know, I'm gonna have to move my whole family somewhere in the East Bay most likely. And I just don't think it's right. I think the city should do something to assist the tenants of Daly City to make it a little bit more of an even playing field for everybody.
Thank you, Mr. Alvarez. Gracia Rojas, Faith in Action.
Good evening. My name is Gracia, and I'm a community organizer with Faith in Action, and I'm actually based and working specifically in Daly City. I visited numerous schools, churches, creques.
Can you speak up just a little bit? There you go.
What if I do this?
Better.
And the number one issue that keeps coming up that I hear in the community is housing. It's rental increases of over a thousand-two-hundred dollars in less than a year. It is no-cause evictions, as you heard recently, and specifically in the block of Peoria, I met a family who has, several families, actually, of a whole unit. This is the second unit on that block that has been evicted. There is a new luxury building of condos up the block of Peoria that has caused a big wave of displacement. I'm not sure if you're aware of this? Two buildings have faced no-cause evictions. Their neighbors have gotten rent increases from fifteen hundred, sixteen hundred, to almost twenty-eight hundred dollars for the same units. The idea that more housing units is the answer to this housing crisis is irrelevant if there's no rent stabilization, if there is no rent control, and if there's no protection for your tenants. So you need both. It is not okay that people in your city call their home is not being protected, they're not being protected. It is not okay that families have to go through this insecurity and this fear of losing their home. It is not okay to be forced out of your home because of high rents, and that's what's happening a lot. You're not, maybe you don't see high evictions in one area, but you'll see that they're getting rent increases, and that's a way of pushing people out. It is not okay that families have to stress about how much rent they have to pay, even if that means eighty percent of their income. The housing situation of all of the Bay Area is a problem. It's not only a problem, it's actually a crisis, and you've heard some statistics and some stories. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rojas. I don't see any more public comment cards. I do want to say to Madame Clerk, if you can put the cards down there for them, if for anyone that would like to meet with me and talk more, then they can get my information. And so I just want to say thank you for everyone that came in and spoke today. So we're going to move on to our appointments, and is there any board appointments or committees? No, seeing none? Okay, we're gonna move into council committee reports. And so with council committee reports, I'd like to say that very earlier today, quite earlier today, we had Affordable Housing Committee with council member Sylvester. And as mentioned, we were talking about, and I like to share this with everyone, that SB three-four-one is gonna, it's actually our redevelopment funds that are now gonna be given back to Daly City. And with that, we did talk about programs that we could utilize to possibly, you know, provide stabilization and rental assistance. Also, you know, looking at programs where we want to ensure that if folks are homeless or in the process of being homeless, that we would look at this amount of resources to support the community. And so this is something that the Affordable Housing Committee is looking towards, most especially since this is resources dedicated to that. And so that's something that we will be working on. And also what we did work on earlier was look over the low-market rate ownership manual, just ensuring that, you know, for those of you that don't know what that program is, it's actually providing opportunities at a below-market rate price to purchase homes in Daly City and provide an opportunity for homeownership. And so these, this is just recently, we're gonna have more committees, we're also looking at our Affordable Housing Trust, and, you know, down the line, we have meetings coming up. I have council member Sylvester joining me. We're going to be looking at these items in the next two weeks or so, and we'll let you know what the updates are around specifically SB three-four-one and also the Affordable Housing Trust. So understand that, you know, you know, we can provide maybe some resources towards what we're hearing on the ground, whether it's resources, you know, provided to helping, you know, the legal aid of San Mateo County or whatnot, and, or also rental assistance. So we'd like to also hear from the community around what would be useful and, you know, seeing what programs out there would be helpful in preventing homelessness in our community. So that was with the Council Committee for Affordable Housing, but I also would like to say thank you to my colleague, Vice Mayor Veda Ventura, for going to the CCAG meeting. He went, and Lou, unfortunately, I was unable to go, but I appreciate you stepping in. For those of you in the audience there and watching, there is one vacant seat for an elected member and two vacant seats for public members on the CCAG Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Committee. The deadline to apply for elected members is Friday, February 23rd, but for all public members, Wednesday, February 21st at 5:00 PM. So please pass this on to anyone you think that may be interested and to- So please pass this on to anyone you think that may be interested and direct them to the CCAG website, which is the City-County Associations of Government of San Mateo County. And also if, um, you have any questions, you can, um, ask, uh, City, City Council. Also, um, if any of my colleagues have any council committees reports at this time, I'd like to yield the floor to you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, today, um, Councilmember Buena Ventura and I met on CDBG grant funds. This is a very trying time because we don't know of our administration if we're going to continue to get funds. But we continue to forge forward as if we are going to get the funds and we allocate them with the help of staff, which they did a tremendous, a great presentation today and they really know this city. And I have had the opportunity to really learn a little bit more myself. What's very, uh, what was very important to me about the rehab assistance for, uh, seniors who are low in income and to help rehab their place and we provide loans. I didn't know we did that and, uh, it was definitely an eye-opener for me. There are other nonprofit who offer community services to the city of Daly City. I really learned a lot today. So we will get back to you and let you know how much is, we're, we're hoping to get about 982,000. And starting from the top all the way to the bottom of providing legal aid for those who are, uh, in dire need of rental assistance or unjust cause eviction. See, the other folk already left already and they, they didn't stick around to hear, uh, all the good things coming up. So, uh, we hear you and we're doing the best that we can. That's on, um, the meeting today for CDBG. Um, I got some other comments, but I'll leave that for other, uh, City Council comments later. Other than that, uh, we as your council, we are on many, many committees. I urge you to go to our website and to find out who, uh, and what council member is on what committee so that if you need further information, you can find it there. And, uh, we have a lot going on in Daly City and coming up. So that's all I have, Madam Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Sylvester. Any more committee? Okay. So moving on to City Council reports, I'd like to, um, share that in the beginning of the month, uh, we did the Arts and Recreation Committee, they met around, uh, looking at the multicultural street fair. And, um, and that's where there was a joint meeting, um, to really look at how we can have the feasibility to having this multicultural street fair. Very excited about that. We have another meeting tomorrow. Uh, on January 24th, the Daly City Community Center had a celebration in Westlake where there were many families that brought their children, who created Freedom Trains and had dialogue on what Mark, Martin Luther King stood for. There were organizations such as organizations that came actually in today, Faith in Action, that were conducting workshops of families to see what exactly they wanted to see in Daly City. And it was really great to see that, um, families convened and the young children together. On January 25th, I also joined the League of California Cities in commemorating the 50 years of the assassination of Dr. Martin Luther King, carrying on the legacy from City Hall, really talking about the dialogue on how we can ensure equity for all of, um, our community. They had speakers from various fields talking about social equity through the lens of environmental issues because the most polluted areas are those that are in lower socioeconomic levels. So how do we promote healthier environments for us all? On January 26th, the Chamber hosted the State of the City's address with Colma and Daly City and it was right here in City Hall. Um, if you would like to view this, it's available online and, um, we can have the, uh, I would like to ask the city manager actually give the transcript and we can provide it online, um, for people to view. So if you've missed that. Um, in the evening, I attended with Councilmember Glenn Sylvester, who's the Vice Chair for the San Mateo Council of Cities Selection Committee, the business meeting dinner hosted by the San Mateo County, who talked about a ballot initiative, uh, Get Us Moving, a platform for residents to share what they think their priorities are for transit and they came here to present. So please make sure to voice your opinions. We also asked them if they were gonna have any community meetings about this. This is particularly around transit, Samtrans. The next closest meeting to Daly City will be in South San Francisco on Thursday, February 22nd at 6:30 PM. On January 29th, I also had the opportunity to meet with the Southern Hills community alongside with our fire. We had, and also we had our Chief Hensley there, Public Works, and our District 5 Supervisor, David Canapa, who updated the residents at the Panorama Elementary School. February 3rd, alongside with Vice Mayor, uh, Ray Veda Ventura, we joined Congresswoman Jackie Spear with other electeds in San Mateo County to talk about the shared priorities and how we could collectively work together in spite of federal funds that are being cut to the very needs of our communities and services. On February 5th, with, uh, Councilmember Glenn Sylvester, we attended Black History Month in our community at Geller Park. It was extremely amazing. There was Keats Fried Chicken, which is our local, um, restaurant here. They had a movie about the Tuskegee Airmen, which I will leave to my colleague, Councilmember Sylvester, to share more about. On February 9th, I had the opportunity to join Bay Area leaders for a Housing Solutions Summit at Facebook. There are over 57 CEOs, uh, that were there from various companies and 25 local mayors to find out how we can work together on this affordable housing crisis. It doesn't only take the public sector, we need to work with the private sector and nonprofit sector to solve this issue that we've heard so prevalent around with our community today. Um, last but not least, um, also went to, uh, the crab feed to support. We had actually majority of our council there. We had, um, Vice Mayor Ray Veda Ventura, Councilmember Glenn Sylvester, and Councilmember, um, Judith Christensen to support our seniors. It was definitely a wonderful sight. I think the crab was great, but you know what? The most important thing was to see the happy seniors there. Um, their volunteers and dedication is extremely inspiring every time I see them. Um, also that evening, I went to Jefferson High School and I just wanted to share with you, if you have not seen, um, this group, they, they're performers and dancers at Jefferson High School and they're called Mission Fusion. They provided an exceptional, uh, performance around all of the global issues in our world. And they presented it in a way that was phenomenal. And I wish they could reproduce it for each and every one of you, but these are our Jefferson High School students that have really inspired me when I went to watch that. I wish that we could replay it, but they went from all over the country, really showing and highlighting all of these leaders that had adversities and they were able to pull through, um, from all over the globe. And for them to have a global lens at that age is, is phenomenal and I have hope in our future generation. Last but not least, I do have announcements to share with you. With my colleagues here on the council, I wanted to inform the community that we've hired a consultant firm, Bill Murray and Associates, to help us in the recruitment of our new city manager. Also down the line, we will have an online survey and per paper survey for those of you who do not have access to have community input. Immigration workshop will be happening as well. We know that there's a lot of i- issues around immigration nationally and to provide our community with more information, we'll have an immigration workshop on Saturday, March 17th here at City Hall from 1:30 to 2:30 with a local, um, resident, Dr. Mark Santa Maria, who will also be providing updated information right here and also will be recorded for those of you that cannot make it. And that is what I have for now. I'd leave the floor to my colleagues.
Yeah, um, I handed out a paper to all of you. Uh, and this is sort of a review of what we as a council have, uh, set as our legislative agenda so far for 2018. And I, I thought, I'd share it with you and, and think about us having a study session to add to the list. I'm sure each one of us has ideas of things we'd like to add and then set some priorities so that we can get moving on stuff. So, um, here's what we had planned to do in 2018. Resolve the details for the front yard paving ordinance with a task force input. Check. That one's been done. Finish negotiations with all of our employee groups. We're almost done. Hire a new city manager. We are on our way. We've hired, uh, a headhunter group to go out and find us a new city manager. We have talked about, uh, the issue of rooming houses and short-term rentals and we have decided that we would like to have a task force to give input and then we would like to establish, uh, regulations for rooming houses and short-term rentals, uh, with the information that we, the input that we get from the task force. We had talked about, uh, a hotel tax, a TOT tax increase to put on the November ballot so that our tax would, uh, hotel tax would be the same as San Mateo County's. And, uh, of course, coming in, uh, June is, we need to pass a new budget, uh, a two-year budget. And so those are the things that we've all said, okay, this is what we're gonna do this year. But what I'd like to say is to each of my colleagues, you know, come up with two or three or four, um, ideas that you have for something that we should put on our legislative agenda. I'd like us to kind of turn those in to staff and they can cluster the ones that are similar and kind of organize it. And then we can have a study session and look at those, decide which ones there seems to be enthusiasm behind and prioritize things. Cause the years are slipping away and we wanna make sure that we do as much work as we can. A lot of it is stuff that we would all easily agree on, so that would be pretty easy to move forward on. So anyway, that's my idea and I hope you'll, uh, support that.
Thank you, thank you, uh, Councilmember Christensen. Um, I think, uh, as last year, I know we, and I don't know, similar years, we've had opportunities to have a council retreat or to talk about, uh, shared, you know, goals and things like that. And I think that's po, you know, maybe we can schedule that. I know we did that last year, Ms. Martel, um, and they've done, we've done that previous years as well and I think that's something maybe we could look at and hopefully my colleagues can provide their...
Wish list, maybe?
Wish list and also the timing to be able to get us all together. So, um, thank you for bringing those up. I know these are, uh, definitely some policy issues that we've all discussed that you've mentioned here. And so thank you for reiterating that. And, um, I think we can all work together and hopefully we can get that on the calendar, so.
Yeah, I was thinking this would be a great opportunity to show all of our constituents that we can work together effectively and we can focus on the people's business. So I'm looking forward to it.
Thank you very much.
So, Madam Mayor, if I might, um, add, at this point in time, at least a couple of the items that, um, well, actually, uh, the last three items that Councilmember, uh, Christensen raised about, um, the issue regarding, uh, rooming houses and short-term rentals. Uh, we actually, the staff and I are working on putting together a task force to develop, uh, input, uh, on those topics and to come back, uh, at a future date and have a study session with the council on, um, information we've gathered and to lay out some potential strategies for dealing with these issues. So that is actually underway. Um, the hotel tax increase, as I've mentioned to you before, um, is something that we are also working on. There's a, uh, there's another couple of ballot measures that we're thinking about related to cannabis and right now we're just getting ready. We've just got the dates for community meetings to go out and have the public education meetings that we discussed with the council on the issue of cannabis in preparation for a potential ballot measure for that. And, um, we are in the midst of working on the budget right now. So all three of those items are really taking a major focus of our time right now to move all of those, uh, forward. With respect to a potential retreat, um, I would suggest to the council that, uh, given what you have just, um, conveyed to the public, uh, that you are in the midst of a recruitment process, I would suggest to you that perhaps you wait until you have identified a new city manager to have a retreat because I think that with my pending retirement in the next few months, um, that you would be better served to wait till you bring on your new manager and you as a new group have a retreat and set your agenda for the next six months and thereafter. Uh, because that will be the individual who will be tasked with ensuring that whatever comes out in that retreat, that will be their agenda and they will carry it forward with you and be reviewing it for you.
Thank you, Ms. Martel, for your update. Um, then I, I, okay, Councilmember Sylvester.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, I'll work backwards with the latest information first. Madam Christensen, thank you so much for coming up with such an outstanding idea. I think we both, uh, or most of us are on the same page, but we get there by different directions. I do have a concern to about ADUs and, uh, creating more ADUs, but yet at the same time trying to solve the housing problem here in Daly City.
Could you share with people what an ADU is?
Uh, accessory dwelling unit. So if you want to build an accessory dwelling unit, should we pass ordinance to limit the size? So if someone next door wants to put a four-story accessory dwelling unit in their backyard, should we do that? I think that's part of the task force that we're trying to put together and, uh, we have to take care of our city and within reason. And of course, community input is very important. So I'd like to thank Ms. Christensen for bringing that matter up. Some issues that I would like to review and Ms. Martel did, uh, mention them and that's to revisit, even though it's a moratorium right now, but that's the cannabis issue, the marijuana. I know last year I had asked for, uh, to move forward on increasing the minimum wage here in Daly City. And I would like to see a follow-up on that. I've also requested a youth advisory group. I have not heard any further on that. And what's also important to me is the various commissions here in Daly City who are consisted of volunteers who serve you. And basically, uh, I think that's our first line of defense. All the things go to them, like the Planning Commission, uh, Recreation, and then it comes to us for council for approval, but that, they are our first line of defense. I think we ought to move forward in getting them some sort of retreat or some sort of stipend for, uh, providing their service for Daly City. So that's to be discussed later. And getting back to the retreat, uh, Ms. Christensen, if we do have a retreat with monks here on the council, if you can promise me food, I'll be there.
And I'm a pretty good cook. I could bring something.
Uh, Madam Mayor Manalo, and I'm gonna, as again, I'm working backwards. Thank you so much. I really enjoyed time together with my fellow colleagues in breaking bread at the crab feed. See, once again, there's food and, um, Marion was there and, uh, it was a, a good time. As, uh, Madam Mayor spoke, I had to look over and I'm just wondering, wow, so many events. But this is to reiterate, folks, a lot is being done. And I had a lot here, but I won't have to go through all of them because the mayor already made mention of it and some of the places that I've been there too, so there's no need for me to talk about it anymore. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Next time I'm gonna try to go first. Um, but I do want to make mention of another, uh, conference that Vice Mayor Buena Ventura and I attended, which had speakers, um, Supervisor Canapa, the mayor of, um, outlook, 2018, the mayor of, um, Mountain View, uh, Assemblymember Mark Berman, and here we were talking about the housing crisis. It's indeed a crisis and it's on our radar, folks. And here they even talked about how difficult... difficult it is for developers. We demand so much of them, like, put aside so many BMRs, but is it worth them for them to build? So, you know, we have to thread that fine line, give and take. So we're aware of that, and again, we're gonna look into that. Lastly, if you were at one of our council meetings, you'll know that Daly City rejoined the Housing Endowment and Regional Trust Program. We worked so hard to get back into that program, which will enable anyone, not just the residents of Daly City, but anyone, to buy a home in Daly City with, with as much as 3% down. And this program will help provide the funding sources for you. Of course, you have to qualify, and up to a maximum, I believe, it's $795,000, but it's a start. And you're probably saying, there's not many places in Daly City under $795,000, but I'm sure you can find something, whether it's a condo or one-bedroom, but the mere fact that you have down payment assistance to help you. And I will do everything in my power to make sure that folks know about this program. As a matter of fact, we have two workshops coming. The other one was sold out in South San Francisco, but we do have two more coming in Daly City. So you can go to the Heart website, or check our website, and we'll gladly post it. And I'm also was elected to be as one of your Board of Directors on the Heart program as well. So a lot is going on, folks. We are looking for better and bigger things in the future amidst all obstacles and odds that we faced, so we remain optimistic. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Sylvester, and thank you for being on there for Heart and representing for us. And for those of you, as he mentioned, there are two workshops, February 22nd and March 22nd, so please look on the website. Really working hard to have more opportunities for our residents here in Daly City. Okay, any other comments? If none, we are moving on to our adjournment, so we are going to adjourn in memory and Councilmember Christensen for Rich Huertas.
Oh, my goodness. Yes.
Richard Huertas. When you look about across the community in Daly City, he and his wife Carolyn have lived here for many, many, many years. Some people know him for, through his activism in, in Original Daly City Protective Association. Some of you may know him for his work with the Daly City Titans, the youth football teams. Some of you may know him as a booster extraordinaire, he and his wife, for Jefferson High School. Some of you know him as a proud teamster, a veteran, an orchid gardener who had all 10 green fingers, and an auto mechanic that generously gave of his ability to all of his neighbors. Rich was an honorable and generous man, a beloved father, grandfather, husband, and neighbor. He made a big difference in the lives of everyone who knew him. He is much-loved and will long be remembered and is a special dear friend of mine, and I know when, at his service, so many people got up and said exactly the same thing, and, and thank you, Richard, for being such a dear friend of mine, person after person after person, from all the different walks of his life. That's what it is to be an honorable man.
Councilmember Sylvester.
Madam Christensen, thank you so much for bringing that up. I do remember when my kids took my son, who suffered from asthma, to Jefferson High School and signed him up for Daly City Football, the Titans, and I was so upset, but throughout the years, he grew out of that asthma, and now he's a police officer, but Rich Huertas played a very, very important part. I was one of the volunteers for the Daly City Titans, and part of my volunteer duties was to do the cooking at, see, here we go, food again, do the cooking at some of the events we would have. It was Mr. Rick Huertas and I who developed something called the Titan Burger. Which consisted of a hamburger, cheese, hot link, and bacon. Oh, that was called the Titan Burger. And Ms. Christensen, thank you so much. It really brings back memories. It's those memories that you never, ever forget. Thank you, thank you, and thank you so much.
So may we have a moment in silence and adjourning in memory of Rich Huertas.